We're in session. Approval of the agenda. Motion made by Mel and second by Betty to approve the agenda as printed and circulated. Is there any questions or correction of the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. Approval of the minutes of June twenty-third, two thousand fourteen.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June twenty-third, two thousand fourteen.
Second. Motion made by Wally and second by Larry to approve the minutes of June twenty-third, two thousand fourteen. Any questions or corrections of the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of that motion to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. Citizen input, nothing at this time. We go to finance and purchasing. Item A, review of the vouchers. General fund of one hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars, sixty-eight cents.
Also move to approve.
Motion made by Mel and second by Betty to approve the general fund of one hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars, sixty-eight cents. Any que- I mean, any questions or corrections of the revenue vouchers at this time? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of that to send to council for approval, second by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. Are we live?
No, we're not live. We're just recording through the card right now and we're just trying to get the audio working.
Okay. Under reserves is forty-one thousand, eighty-three dollars and seventy-four cents.
I'm going to approve the reserves of forty-one thousand, eighty-three dollars and seventy-four cents.
Motion made by Larry and second by Wally to approve the reserves of forty-one thousand, eighty-three dollars and seventy-four cents. Any questions or corrections of the reserves at this time? Hearing none, all in favor of that motion to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. Under contingency, seventeen thousand, four hundred dollars. Motion made by Wally and second by Bob to approve the contingencies of seventeen thousand, four hundred dollars. Any questions or corrections of the contingency at this time?
What do you mean, what contingency funds do we have available to spend on this? Can we put in fifteen thousand?
Right. What, but if you will remember, we also reallocated some money from twenty-eleven to pay for this project. And then the Main Street lighting project, which was traumatic contingency, so that will replenish that contingency.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of that motion to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. TIP expenditures of two thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the TIP expenditures, two thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Motion made by Wally and second by Mel to approve the expenditure of two thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. Any questions or correction of that TIP expenditures? Hearing none, all in favor of that motion to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. Review of license applications. As, as you know, the, the police department okayed these, but I'll read them anyway. Operator license new is Granal Arkey, Jessica O'Conne, Jacob Eiker, Christopher Lannabret. And license renewal, operator license renewal is Beth Gilbertson, Lisa Wolf, Susan M. Cobbler, Wanda All, All, and Susan Smith.
I'll move to approve the license applications new and renewals.
Motion made by Mel and second by Betty to approve the new and renewal license application. Any other questions or corrections of these? Hearing none, all in favor of that motion to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. Review of payroll, we have three dates here. One is for June twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen, in the amount of forty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents. One is for July eleventh, two thousand fourteen, in the amount of forty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-five cents. And July twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen, in the amount of forty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-six cents.
I'll move to approve payroll as presented. Second.
Motion made by Mel and second by Larry to approve payroll as, as presented. Is there any questions or corrections at this time?
I have a few questions. There's three hours for Chilton parade by police. Does that happen to the back door somehow, or is that...
No, that's, we all, it's kind of an agreement in the company that everybody goes and assists every other parade that people have and then they just pay their own officer to go. Chilton sends our, there's up for Brilliant Fest and then we send ours down for Bob's Big Parade.
It's a trade-off.
It's a trade-off, yep. Seven point five hours for the triathlon for the county is reimbursed with your overtime wage. So that we can get back.
The other question was DPW moving metal plates off the road. What is that about? Is that from the construction vehicle or...
There was a, um, an incident that happened on Main Street where those metal plates that were sitting on West Water Street were in the middle of the night. And Dennis was called in to...
Yeah. Well, you'll have to talk to the chief when he asks if she has enough to go.
It's been dealt with.
They shouldn't have been there.
Yeah, but they were barricaded. They had barricades, fine.
They're over on... They're over on site.
Yeah, they were on site.
They were on site.
And the construction company was out of town at the time for our agreement. And they just sit in there and, well, somebody took it home, you know. It's been taken care of.
Talk about ambition.
Well, he didn't take my hand and move them up there.
Oh, no. Sure, several tons.
Okay, is there any other discussion on the payroll? Hearing none, all in favor of that motion to say aye. Opposed motion carried. Under the TIP number four, debt restructuring. As you see in, in your committee or your top summary, this is just for information only.
Yes, Greg took a better look at our last financial audit and, um, when he at first prepared his cash flow analysis, he didn't have one of the, um, the state aids that we get with the computer exemption for. And a big portion of that is for TIP number four, which is Professional Paint and Henry's International. There's a lot of computer aid that we give to those, those two properties. So he didn't have that calculation until then. And once he did, he saw the audit, he went, okay, it's looking better. He said, but we still need to keep an eye on it. You may want to do a picture that's starting to look like it's not as, not as good cash flow. So we'll just monitor and watch it.
So, not in the cash flow.
There's not, it's cash flowing after he...
It is cash flowing.
Yes, after he looked at the audit, he found that it was cash flowing better than he had projected. So he said, right now, there is no...
I mean, the headphone. I'm not getting anything.
Remember, okay, we're all there. Yes, our debt's coming, you know. It was out as part of that, that was doing the right thing.
Right.
Any other discussion on the TIP number four, debt restructuring? Okay, we'll move on. Protection of personal property, we have our monthly ambulance report.
Good. June was kind of a slow month again. We ended up running twenty-six calls. We had ten no transports, sixteen transports in that. One of them was an accident that we had a couple of people that we signed off on, so generates quite a few no transports when you do that. So then we had a couple of standbys with the fire department in there, so. Out of our twenty-six calls, uh, we had fifteen of them in the city of Brilliant, seven in the town, and four outside the area. Last two, three months now, it seems like we're picking up quite a bit outside the area. We were down in the Holstein a couple of days ago for a call in Chilton, so we're starting to pick up some from outside the area, so it's generating some calls for us. As far as, on the expense side here, we're starting to get our payroll, which was a big overage for us here in line. We hired a couple of new people. One of our new hires, we let her go after a month. We've seen her outside smoking cigarettes and she had missed two calls, so she was out of orientation, so it was like, you're, you're not really fitting in with what we expected of our employees, so we let her go. One of our other guys that we hired is from outside the area, actually runs his own ambulance service, doing events at the ATV tracks and stuff, so. When he, he does that on the weekends, so he has pretty much all week available for us, so he's picking up a lot of our day shifts, which are where we struggle to get staffing a lot of times, so I've served it out though. We have five more applicants that applied here, we're gonna bring them in and do some interviews, so we can get our numbers back up to where we are, so. Hopefully, we'll be doing good with the salaries and such. The other thing that's hurting us is our collections, people just aren't paying their bills, so. I talked last month that we'd probably see a pretty good spike now mid-year, people are starting to hit their deductibles. This month, we're at almost forty calls already, it's, it's starting to show, so. We, we figured, yeah, I think, last time I checked, we had thirty-seven calls and the ambulance is out right now, so it's starting to pick up again, so hopefully we can keep that trend going through the rest of the year. We have the new rig in, we put it in service. I think we got almost twenty-five hundred miles on it already. It's actually due for an oil change already, so it's, they're not using it tonight, it's in, the headquarters giving the oil change, so we'll have it back tomorrow and, um, it'll be about two weeks, yeah, we'll get that lettered. I met with John last week and we ordered what we're gonna do on it, so now it takes a little bit of time to get printed up, but I figure about two weeks and then it'll be lettered up and ready to go for sure. But it's a great improvement over what we had, and I know, we talked with the mayor on when we transported him, that red rig was a rough ride and we've actually been hearing from our patients that it's, it's a smooth ride. We were a little worried about that V-eight, how it was gonna do. It's actually seemed to have more power and suction than diesel engine we had, so no issue so far with it. That's all I have. Any questions?
This is curious, is it busy or outside of Brilliant, do you have areas that you cover? And are we getting more calls for us to cover, is that why?
Yeah, Chilton used to, when they would go out on a call, they, if they would go out on a call, we could go in there and mutual aid. When they go out for a transfer from Calumet to one of the outlying hospitals, we can't go in there and mutual aid, so they were sending plenty of ambulances down. So they were taking a lot of, one of those taking a lot of the backup calls. They're not doing that anymore, they're just floating a rig from the valley down, so we're kind of picking up some calls that way. Across the board, everyone's starting to pick up again, and it seems like the middle of the year is where we start turning over, like I said, with the insurance deductibles and such. The valley, they stay pretty much consistent throughout, but NEW is comparable in size and, and call volume as we are, and they're seeing a pretty good spike this, in the month of July here, so.
It appears that we need more calls from the outside to make our, our budget, so.
Yep. And we have a new, a new person at headquarters generating these budgets, or the, the financial sheets and stuff for us, and I know we've had like six calls in the Woodville already and it's not showing up on our revenue side, so I'll check into that, these may change as well. I know last month we had some errors with the, one of the sheets was showing we had more no transports than we did, we looked into it and it, we actually, it was right on the, on the financial side, it was just in our tables up here, they were wrong, so we're kind of working over that. With Jack Hill transitioning into retirement, he's kind of pushing duties off to people and we're learning his ways of how to do it, so. But I did notice that our, our Woodville subsidy, that's where we come in, when we go into that area, we get that five hundred dollars for mutual aid on there and it should show up in there and it's not, so we'll figure out where that's going. I see it showing up a little bit on the fifteen hundred, but that was, that's been on there since the first of the year, so we'll figure out where that is for sure. But we're picking up a lot more within the city, our call volume too, so.
Any other discussion on the ambulance? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Monthly police department report, Chief Minion?
If you have my report with the number I highlighted, some of the cases that we had, June was, June was pretty busy, July has started on even more, so I'm not sure what's going on with the hot weather or what's happening. We've had some counterfeit bills that have been passed to several businesses in the, in the city here. Kirk is actually working on those, sent it down to Secret Service to see what, what's going on with that. We did have several narcotics arrests in June, that seems to be picking up a little bit. We've been finding more from our traffic stops and other things, we've been pulling off some narcotics off people, but that's the trend of the area, it's just, there's a lot of stuff out there. Brilliant Fest this year was a first for me, we've never had it before, where we had four calls during the parade, so it's been several times where people have said, are we sure we have to have this much staffing here for the parade? Well, it paid off this year. We had three medical calls, one of them was pretty serious, was a child choking. Mike was there to assist and so it worked out very well. And then also during the parade, we had a home invasion. People were up front, they walked into their house and found an individual in their house who didn't belong there. He was intoxicated and high on her narcotics, he was on something. Actually, we didn't find him during the parade, we looked for him during the parade, he wasn't there. After the parade, he came back and we started conversing about it. Ben Bastian, who's in the school, actually had some information where it led us to the individual. We found him, he was in a state where he couldn't really answer any questions, told us that the dog actually welcomed him into the home and that's how he got into the home, so. In checking in the probation agent, he was not even supposed to be living in our city, so the charges have been referred to probation agent, so I'm not sure what's gonna happen with that. But that was, that was definitely first F four, it's been great, but we handled it and most of it was handled without anybody knowing any different than anything was going on, so I give a lot of credit to the jerk guys and the way that they did it and the way they have it set up. We did have numerous assists in the month of June, we had our Brilliant Fest event and then we had the triathlon event, they always help with the county for that, they usually use two or three of our officers, like I said, we get paid back by the event coordinators. Then we also assisted Reedsville Fireman's picnic, that went well, we didn't have any major problems, it was just a big weekend. That, where our contract actually paid off very well, because there's no way they can handle it on their own, so that actually works out very well. And then we're in preparation, I think you guys have all seen the information, National Night Out is coming up on the fifth, we've had some great community support for that. We have the Women's Club is gonna be coming in, they've got some safety information that they've printed up, they're gonna be here, the pool's gonna be open, racquetball, they've got a bounce house that was donated, face painting and, and food, so if you guys get a chance, stop in for that. So far, so good, our budget seems pretty good, we're, we're right on track where we should be, not on one. That's it for me.
Oh, is there any other questions or concerns of the chief at this time?
Officer Parker is in his final stages, he'll start his phase four tomorrow, where he's basically, he's the officer in charge, the other officer is there, but doesn't do anything, so hopefully by middle of August, he should be done. He does have three weeks of training he has to do for the military, so he'll be leaving the fourth of September, be gone for three weeks. I told him, well, as long as he's back before all the duck hunting, deer hunting and everything else occurs, so hopefully he'll be ready to go by the end of August.
Did Officer Ben DeLevy yet for his surgery?
Nope, he does not have to have it. So, he is, yes. He, um, we had an officer who thought he might have to go out with surgery on his shoulder and he's just gotta do some physical therapy for six weeks, so we're in good shape.
Thank you, Chief. Monthly fire department report, I think you'd have something in your packet at this time?
He didn't submit anything, no.
No? Okay. Monthly human court report, you have that in your packet? City building in the ground, monthly DPW report, I get board reports on that.
Yeah, I just wanted to update you on what's been going on with the permanent public works. As you can see on Main Street, the house that was purchased by the water utility is now completely down and gone, the site looks good, they're gonna pull in some grass and then that project took almost three days for them to do, basically. So I think they did a great job at, at getting that done within a very narrow little budget, and they did a good job there.
What's the half of the garage?
We're gonna keep that up and use it for storage. I think the, the bigger of the two sheds is gonna be shared with the utility and with the police department. And the small one, I don't have any.
They're gonna leave it at that location?
Yep, and they're just gonna sit there, we'll put the logs on everything and just leave them there for storage until the time that we need that space for something else. The back fence that kind of connects the two buildings, the property owner on the backside on Washington Street asked if we could keep that up for privacy. So when I, I talked to Bill Drum today and I said, just kind of keep an eye on kids, you know, and I was like, oh, cut through, we'll go to school or wherever, so he's gonna keep an eye on that, just to make sure there's nothing going on, sure the police department can kind of watch the area too.
And it's gonna be very, very beneficial for us. Call that we had over the weekend, we actually had two vehicles that were towed and impounded here to the PD and we only had, obviously we only have one garage bay, so we had to do some shuffling around and, I mean, it worked, we made it work. Luckily, one car ended up going to Scott's when they brought the other one in, but having the extra garage is gonna be very helpful. And then the other issue is with the ATVs, it's very difficult to use them now, because you have to have them on the trailer and then hook the trailer up and then get them off. And they're, they're starting to get more wear and tear from sitting outside in the sun, so they're gonna be able to just be back, they're gonna be able to store it in there off the trailer, if we need them, we can hop on them and go. So it should work out actually really nice where the location is for us to use, so it should be beneficial. And if we have these cases where we have to store something, we've got somewhere to go with it, so. We're very happy.
Also the advantage of having that building gone, now we don't have to lock the road up with assault trucks. We can back in, we're, I guess, Dennis Janice talked, we can move that manhole, whatever you wanna call it, over, so they can back in with the trucks number one and you have to get the salt in, we don't block any, any post up, so. There's some good advantages to it.
Is that, you know, it better be hard enough, that there's heavy trucks in there?
Well, did you see those bricks in there?
Yeah, I see that, but you still...
Huh?
Were they buried all under?
Well, they buried, but they left the big old bricks in it, the bricks are about two, two feet long. They're twelve by twelve. I mean, they're old, they're, they have three different cells to them. They have walls inside of the house, you have brick walls, that house is old. I think they used it as a prison one time, had to.
So left it up there.
I noticed the street has some damage to it too, is that part of this project?
Um, that was, yes, that was to disconnect the utilities, double the patch.
That's what I kind of figured it would be, yeah.
Yeah, to close the service right at the main, because there's no intent to ever use that service there. Yeah, that'll be done, yes, this, this summer, probably within the next few weeks, when Jocer Brother comes and repairs on like roads. Then they'll pull decent patch workers, spot by on, on Calumet Street too, who has service leave.
Um, that Dennis will look at next year and put as a, on our patch list.
Yeah.
Will it be there yet next year?
Kind of keep an eye on it, if it gets kind of worse, you can probably throw some whole patch in there and see if it's... Yeah, it's kind of a bad spot.
Okay, DPW report, any more questions, Lori on the DPW? Um, at this time, gentlemen, we have to go into closed session here.
Done deal.
Uh... Roll call.
Peter, Peter?
Here. Here.
Mel Edinger?
Here. We're in session. Approval of the minutes of June twenty-third, two thousand fourteen, regular council. Oh, sorry about that, hey, Lori, please, be out of here quick. Approval of the agenda.
Also move to approve the agenda as printed and circulated. Second.
Motion made by Mel and second by Larry to approve the agenda as printed and circulated. Any questions or correction? Hearing none, all in favor of that motion to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. Now approval of the minutes of June twenty-third, two thousand fourteen, regular council, city council, and July fourteenth, two thousand twenty, city council utility commission meeting.
I'll move to approve, uh, of this.
Motion made by Mel and second by Larry to approve...
No change orders or any bad news or anything tonight, but RJM did mobilize at the pump house site a week ago today. And they've worked on putting the gravel road in to the site and they've connected the water main that was installed by Jocer. They've sent it back to the pump house and then today they worked on pouring the pump house building foundation and footings. And then they had to let that all set, so I don't think there'll be too much activity going on until later in the week at the pump house site. Then Jocer, I think they were out there working today, getting ready to start pressure testing the main, but it took them almost all day to get ready to start, so rather than doing it late in the day, they have decided to delay that. They had somewhere else to go, so they'll be back in town on Friday to pressure test the main. They have the restoration all pretty much done. I know they're gonna schedule a meeting with Lori and Dennis and then also with the town to do a walkthrough of the project. And then they're actually gonna come back in October, when the main is gonna be closer to when the main is gonna be placed into operation. And that's when they're gonna do the bacteria testing and get all the same samples on the water main. Rather than doing that now and then having the water sit in the main for three months and most likely go bad, and then have to redo it all, we've decided that it's going to wait until closer to when the main's gonna be placed into service. So that's all I have to report, but if you have any concerns.
Any more comments or sentiments, Lori, you know about...
I have not heard from Sam.
Is there any other questions or concerns for Amy? Hearing none, thank you Amy very much, appreciate you coming. Oh, yeah, why, but I love that, thank you for keeping me up on the tab here. At seven-ten, we have a public hearing, ordinance for recreational fires. At this time, is there anybody for or against? Is anyone for or against recreational fires? Last call, anybody for or against? Hearing none, we close a public hearing on ordinance on recreational fires. From the consent agenda, item six, A, B, C, D, one, two, and, one and two.
Also move to approve the consent agenda items as mentioned. Second.
A motion made by Mel and second by Wally, I mean Larry, to approve from consent agenda, one, A, B, C, D, one, one and two. Any questions or corrections from the consent agenda? Hearing none, we have a poll vote of the council.
Fa?
Yes.
Mel?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Yeah, that motion is carried. Approval of appointment redevelopment authority commission, is that something?
No, that was just to let the council know that we did receive the resignation of one of our members, Gaylord, and so, you know, of an individual that would like to... you know, of an individual that would like to serve or used to serving on the redevelopment authority commission at the age of thirty. I make that appointment then as soon as I see.
Okay. Department head report, police department chief, you've got any more to add?
Nope, none of them.
Park and Recreation, Ann is giving a safety meeting or a security?
Uh, I think she's still in CPR.
CPR training, that's what you call it, yeah. They're trying to make dummies come alive. Library, Chris?
Just to add to what's on my report that we came in this morning and the elevator wasn't working and we had Otis out and one of the computer boards had to be replaced. It's now back working.
Any more from Chris? Thank you, Chris. Community development, Justin?
All right, although all we know, I have resigned as my, from my position with the city of Brilliant. I wanna thank all the council members, Lori and Mayor Dieter for the tremendous opportunity to serve residents of Brilliant. It's been a privilege and an honor to work here and I really, really enjoyed my time and the wonderful people I met in the community. Brilliant is a hidden treasure in the area and not many people know what wonderful opportunities and I hope I was able to shed some light on them and help the economic growth of the city throughout my time here. I can't say enough how much people in this community love this city and are willing to give back. I wish nothing but great things and more, more development for the city in the future and I think with the leadership in place, you guys have a very prosperous future. My remaining days here, I've been working with Pam and Lori and updating the website which we launched and after a couple of delays with our email servers, everything is going really well right now and we continue to add more updates and information to the website as well as pictures. On Friday, I'll be conducting two more retention visits, one at NSC and one at SDF Strapping and I believe the mayor's gonna be accompanying me on these visits. The directional wayfinding signs and adaptive floors have been installed along with the new benches and seating areas on Main Street and South Park. Twenty-three out of twenty-four hanging baskets were adopted on Main Street this year, so I think that program was a success. The newsletter and directory have been mailed out to some of them and, um, that's all that. RDA is looking to be working on the hall fest and we're gonna have meetings around eight to divide up the remaining tasks for that project and I think you guys have known or have mentioned that Beaumere Properties is now representing the TNC building on Main Street. Lori, they stopped in to meet with her when they took over that property. Joy's D Screen Printing, it'll be opening in downtown as well as Creative Knots will be coming to town in the former town, the country inside the building. There's any questions, something else?
That one downtown, that comes from Potter, right?
Yep, I think she was selling stuff out of her house and she had a little stand on the side of the road.
What are those homemade products, I didn't get as much today.
Yeah, she sells a lot of like homemade woodworking projects and just variety of different crafts and it's gonna be a nice little asset to her downtown with knickknacks and.
Yeah, I checked out, she's got a website, I checked that out, it looks like she repulses furniture.
Yes, that too, yep. Brewery and.
Yeah, I was impressed by her little website there, she had a whole thing so.
She works like mostly at the farmer's market too, so I know that she's gonna alter her hours to stay open and then open and. It's gonna help all of us in this program.
Yes, you need Lori.
Justin is an old someone. But as his boss would like to give him this plaque, it just says, "An appreciation of Justin Linsmeyer. Your service has been an example of hard work and dedication, you're truly, we truly thank you." You've done a lot.
Remember that David Haverdham, Mel?
Yeah.
What are your goals? Justin's packing his purse, bill point, brings out this little recipe cart like big as this thing in there and he had ten goals on here and half of them written off, almost looked for a job if he found one. Now you need it.
Well, that guy's organized, we need to hire him.
Yeah, we need to hire him.
I was surprised by it because it was a well-worked little piece of paper that is just.
And there was no way he knew that question was coming, there's no way. But at least you, you were on the ball and you impressed us from that, so I imagine in your new future, the only one you have to impress now is your future wife.
Wow, it's a big task.
Any questions of Justin at this time? Okay, thank you, Justin, very much. Res zoning request, uh, community assembly of God Incorporated, eight-twenty-one Fairway Drive. We have to set a public hearing on that one?
I'll move to set a public hearing then Monday, August twenty-fifth at seven-ten PM. Hear testimony for or against the rezoning request.
Do we have a second?
Outside, yes.
A motion made by Mel and second by Lori to move to set a public hearing, date for August twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen, at seven-ten PM to hear testimony for or against rezoning request. So, everybody have an idea where this is going?
All right.
Pardon me?
There's a map on here.
Yeah, you guys should have seen the map.
Yeah, they have a map in their package.
The planning commission looked at it, we reviewed a couple of things and they went back and tweaked it, so. That'll be there for many, many years.
They don't have a plan for that.
All right.
And they're, they're all game with X.
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah, they're, you know, yeah, it all went well. Park and Recreation, nothing at this time, library and board commission, utility commission, nothing at this time. Redevelopment Authority, nothing, community of the whole, community development director, relation coordinator position. We had discussion in closed session and we went to open session. Uh, what's the council's pleasure at this time? Now, we were talking about part-time or full-time?
Um, Mayor, if I could comment, I guess, um, seeing we were, I think in all fairness to the council, I don't think you were ready to make a decision at this time. I will work on this for the next committee, the whole meeting, which is only two weeks away and look at some more options of restructuring our staff a little bit and see what else we can do. Ask some other communities what they're doing, I'll ask Chilton, Keel, the hosting, what they're doing. I don't believe, Chilton has a community adult member here anymore, so I wanna see what they're doing different. Maybe there's an option that we haven't even thought of yet that's up there, so.
I think we have a lot of questions in our mind too, is.
I'm sure you.
What's the best way to handle it?
Right, you don't wanna just, I don't wanna knee-jerk and jump into something.
So, we need a motion to table this till next month?
Also move to, to table to the COW meeting.
Motion made by Mel and second by Betty to table the community development director and redevelopment coordinator position till the next month's meeting. Any question, other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of that motion? Opposed motion, carry. Police aid assistant?
I think we resolved that.
We were.
We'll restructure some hours and different things and that can be taken off the table list.
Cemetery commission report, uh, at nothing at this time, but I understand, uh, it seemed like things, I took a tour of the cemetery. Uh, the things, things are, has improved considerably from last year, maybe because we had, you know, better weather and maybe better communication, we did. Okay, item, item number nine, old business ordinance, recreational fires?
Move to adopt ordinance O R fourteen dash O seven recreational fires. Second.
Motion made by Larry and second by Mel to approve ordinance O R fourteen dash O seven recreational fires. Any questions or corrections of that? Hearing none, poll vote of the council?
Yes.
Mel?
Yes.
Crystal?
Betty?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Is there any, any new business, any new business anybody wants to discuss or bring up? Anything on your mind?
Well, I was over on the west side of the state, several towns or cities and they're all big. One was like forty-four thousand, one was forty-nine thousand people, one was like ten thousand people. You think they're, we're way ahead of them in streets, let me tell you. I drove around the streets, cause my daughter moved into this one place and they are bad. They really got problems over there. It all was involved in, Hudson, all of them. You think our streets are bad, you should see those over there, they're poor people, they're driving chuckles. Now, we could be happy, our streets are as good as they are. You know, we don't like them.
I don't wanna get to that point.
No, we don't like them. Don't feel too bad, that was just gonna take us time, those people are really got tough time.
Well, thank you very much for the report. Uh, any other discussion you would, yes, Justin?
One thing I forgot to mention in my report is I do have an extra copy of the Fox City's Worth the Drive issue of Brilliant is featured in. They did a really nice job with the article and highlighting a lot of assets here in town. So, if anybody wants to read it and you guys can circulate it among yourselves, that's for free.
Thank you very much. Uh, communication to the city administrator?
Um, in my report, I, I will be attending the master academy up in Green Bay tomorrow, taking a couple of courses there. Next Friday, Mr. Shan is coming with some high school football players who do community service project for the city. I think that's great, he has some ideas and things and I know it's a couple more and I wanna tell him when he comes up next Friday. I think that's wonderful that they're gonna do that for us. Joy's been working with Workforce to set up a utility and a coding software, or that's our utility, a coding software vendor to do some online payments using their credit card and also this new company that we are going to be switching over to, we can also set it up that we can pay any, any fines, so. You know, they can pay their, not only their utility bills, but fines they might have, get drop licenses, whatever we decide to do. Property tax bills, so we're gonna set that all up. Yeah, this, this'll make everybody, it'll make people happy, I don't know how many times that we're at, we accept evidence of credit cards, so. I think it'll, it's, it's the way people are, they're plastic, you know. Yes, it really is, so we're, we're advancing into the future here, we're getting excited by it. Last week Wednesday, we had our Manitowoc River watershed study meeting here. Mayor and I were very disappointed with the turnout because we had enough people here, about twenty, maybe that. Only five were from the community, the rest were like representatives, meaning resource people, DNR, regional planning commissions, Manitowoc, Bay Lakes Regional Planning Commission and East Central Benson Regional Planning Commission staff were here, DNR staff were here, UDMC grant staff were here, Calumet County staff were here. And there weren't, there wasn't the room floor people we had at the last time, so it was disappointing, I don't know, but it was the time. It was a gorgeous summer night, what was going on, but we did keep moving and Mary Carl facilitated the meeting, the next meeting is yet to be scheduled, but the mayor and I have both volunteered to be on this task force as did the village Potter president, Doug Law, he's gonna be on there. I would imagine that somebody from Hilbert, somebody from the town of Brilliant or town or a tool or whatever would be on there too. So, kinda watch for that, um, that work will continue now. I think what Mary thought is we meet for in this task group and then from there apply for grants for projects and all that stuff. But we're still here as the city gonna work on our short-term goals, as far as our models. Ellers talked to them today, they're gonna finish up the final document of the five-year financial management plan. They thought they'd have it to us mid-August, they're waiting to get the final equalized valuations, which are due middle of August. So, that's what they're waiting for, finish that document. I'm working now to get the budget, worksheets ready for department head staff. What they'll get is basically their budget for next year based on what Ellers is projecting and then they can tweak it from there, so folks, you're gonna have it easy. It's really gonna make it easy and I started filling in the blanks today. Yeah, this'll be nice, then it was worth the money, it was well worth the money to have Ellers come and do that for us. Make, make your jobs easier too. How's, how's the website? Navigating okay? Awesome, great. Everyone got, I, there was a couple of questions, phone calls, emails today, but it sounds like everyone's getting prepared. Yes, yeah, what Miles told us last week was.
Uh, at Wednesday's meeting, like I said, some, some of the problems that we encountered, from what I gather after a while, that there was some trading over in Hilbert that when they had the gong last year and I guess a number of communities went over there, so most of those people were on fire, so they didn't show up. But they just gave us a map and I'll just try and hold this up a little bit. In, in the yellow spots back here, that's over towards the Hilbert area. I mean, that is the most troubled area where, where we had meetings, our first meeting, second meeting. What we had to do is take a map and put a, a dot on where, where the beast of the most troubled area, where the most inflow is that is blocking up the water. And you see over here in Brilliant, we have a couple spots back in here, but this is a damage along Spring Creek that we're gonna try to open up this winter, okay? So, the point is that we, we have to look at this map, we, we're gonna try to concentrate not only in this yellow area that we see here, but we have to concentrate all the way down to the Manitowoc River. I mean, what we do here is gonna affect our neighbors down there, we have to be very cautious what we do with our neighbors. I mean, they don't, we wanna get rid of our water, but we wanna give it them all the water, you know? Cause they got firemen down to the south of us and we don't want them to flood out. So, I, I'm very, I'm overwhelmed with a number of people from the Department of Natural Resources that Miles had brought together for us. There's so much knowledge here that we can capitalize on to help us out to, this project maybe takes six months, might take a year to, to try to find the problems or what we're trying to accomplish here, to get water out of Brilliant and their heart, their, um, areas to the south of us. So, it, it's gonna be a big task, but if a number of us work all together from all our communities, columns, town of Brilliant, Brilliant, Potter and, and through those areas in Hilbert, I think we'll, we'll do, we'll be successful in it. So, it, it, it looks like a lot, it is a lot, there's a lot of things can go on. So, I, I would like to ask some of you council members who, who's got time to come to these meetings with us to help us, give us a support. I know with people have different things going on, but, I mean, we are elected officials, we have an obligation to our citizens, to our manufacturing, to our businesses, or to our homeowners, to the golf course, we have, we have to get rid of this water somehow. And over the years, it seemed like it has been increasing more and more. You know yourself, what we're trying to do with the INI, Amy with McMahon's now, they've been, we've been doing the televising. We've been finding a lot of water coming into our, our streams, into our laterals, I mean, more than what we thought there was coming in. And what is that, one, how many gallons, it was just tremendous, I mean, just constant. You know how hot it is, how warm it's been, there's a lot of water coming through. So, that's one thing we have to tackle besides this yet, so. We've got two or three big projects that the city of Brilliant is, is gonna have to do to, you know, to accomplish these goals. And it's not gonna be five years or ten years, it's gonna be longer than that for the INI and that, so. Just an update, this is where we are, what we're, what we're trying to do, if we're trying to open up some of these areas and find out where our problems are. And everybody says it's the dam down river, well, DNR said it's not the dam, it's, it's not that part of it. So, we got other problems that's blocking up, you know, the whole Spring Creek, so. That's what we have on, on this part of it anyways.
So, are future meetings always gonna be here?
No.
No.
I think Potter was going to do the next one, but they, yeah, they volunteered to take it up there.
Yeah, we, we wanna try to, we wanna try to rotate this so we, we can understand what other citizens may be coming and talking about and, and get, get more people. what other citizens may be coming and talk about it and get, get more people involved and everybody have ownership. We don't, we don't want ownership here. I mean, Lori and I both volunteered, I'll, I'll, I'll volunteer to run the girl if I have to, along with Mary Correll and that, but I mean, it's going to be time consuming on my part, but it is what it is, that's part of what I want to do anyways. So.
Could we be dropped, like an email when the next meeting is going to be?
Sure.
Should we?
Yeah.
Just for sure, so that we know what's going to be and where it's going to be and what time it's going to be and so on.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, because we're, we're always, we're looking, it's not only, you know, the farmers, we're looking for stakeholders, you know, like the Brilliant Nature Center and the golf course and, and, you know, people who touches the marsh would have a little bit, you know, go ahead.
Yeah, what Mary is going to do is prepare like a, a little summary of what's been going on and then identify stakeholders, like the mayor said, so that we can send those out to all the people that have been attending these meetings, so that they can say, I have somebody in mind that might be a good person that would fit in on this for our community. So they're looking at like farmers, hunters, bankers, teachers, you know, property owners, business owners, homeowners, you know, just all kinds of people, not just one, one group, not just government, but all kinds of stakeholders, to be honest. A small group, but a task force only about twelve people. So I have already said I could fill it all for Brilliant, folks, if you want to do it, but I don't want to shift the scale one way, so frankly, I don't want it to be all about Brilliant.
Do we city have any concerns?
I think that's, well, it's true.
Are we going to rely on grants?
Yeah, well, that's, that's the focus, is to go out your brains.
I, I believe, I believe money, I believe there is money that's available for these blood grants. I believe there are better things than the, the Department of Natural Resources and all the calip that's here. I think they know where to get the money. And I think the reason why they want us as a local, our local people, you know, there's Hilbert, Potter and Brilliant to do it, is because, so we can show ownership. You know, it's, it would be easy for them to justify giving us money than a DNR say, oh, you guys are taking all the money, you know, but we can, if we can show it, it's for a project and we have ownership of that project, then I think we would get the money. I, I don't think there'd be much of a problem because it's for, it's for a cause of funding and to control, you know, control the marsh.
But the DNR is kind of a part of the process here to, to help.
Oh, oh, yeah, I, I didn't, I don't, Lori and I were just odd by, in our first meeting here, how many people said I'm from, I'm a biologist and I'm a this and I'm that, and it was overwhelming to them. I didn't think the DNR had that many people that could be assistance to us here in Brilliant after all those years, you know? And, you know, like Governor Walker says, the DNR will not say no, they have to help us all, so. So we're going to hold them on that. Election time is coming up, remember that.
Best, best guy that we ever had.
Miles, yes. And Miles didn't want to get off this committee, but he would, he, he wants to go into retirement. And I don't think he, he, I think he'd rather stay here and help us all. He, he took this as a pet project, but I think his boss has told him to pull back and give it to us. So it's, but he, he's right there with us, he's out giving a little gab and telling people. Okay, press time?
Nothing except, but this is the first time I've known as you're a wall, so I recommend you for that.
Yeah, he took my green paper away. He broke my heart.
I was sorry. Anne's here though.
Oh, Anne, did you want to say something? Did you bring your dummies back to life?
Yes, we did. So if you have any questions on my report? Otherwise, just for the boilers, they're going to be starting heat to be built, but of course, the two old boilers, their shut-off valves are not working, so those have to be, be replaced at an additional cost, so. I did send it to insurance, I don't know if they'll cover that, though. That's just something from, you know, over here is because they weren't used as much to shut them off and keep them moving, so. And they need to be there, so if we need to work on boiler two, we can, you know, shut it down and just have boiler one working yet, so.
But other than that?
Otherwise.
Your claim is, I mean.
Yeah, it's pretty much settled, yeah.
And we've been paid.
And we've been paid and, yep.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And I gotta admit, I use the pool just about every day, my wife and I, and the pool's been, I mean, I, I think this is the best that pool ever been taken care of, like water's constant, the shower room, the showers are, are very constant and I think the ladies did one heck of a job painting the building while everything was down and got to commend them for that and, and they took ownership, you know, they really went out there and they, you know, except when they painted this room, I wasn't happy, that's all.
I do. You know, did, was the loss of revenue, did that kind of cover by insurance or did that not cover?
No, we didn't, we didn't have that in the policy.
Oh.
We haven't had that yet. So I don't know for future if that would ever be considered in the policy, I don't know. I don't know what the premium would be on something like that, I don't know.
Any other questions, Anne? Thank you, Anne, very much. Karen? Motion made by Mel and second by Bob, we're hearing all opinions, motion, I, opposed and motion carrying. Karen, thank you everybody, have a good night. Go watch for your orders.
You did a good job.